Hello everyone, how you doing? It's seven o'clock, happy Wednesday. We will be getting started shortly, but give folks a few more minutes to log in. Please spread the word that we are live and on YouTube so you can join a session and communicate with us as well. Share your comments and just have a good time understanding the word together. Thank you. Again, for those who just jumped online and who are on YouTube, we're going to give a few more minutes for folks to come on before we get started. We'll be starting with prayer in a few minutes and we will be still in the book of Romans today, so be ready. Okay, it's five after. We're going to go ahead and get started with prayer and we can just do a quick review of chapter fifteen before we get underway. Pastor should be in shortly. So can we have Elder Rosa, how you doing?
Doing fine.
Can you open up in prayer for us?
Sure. Father God, we honor and glorify you. We thank you for this opportunity to come together over the technology to study your word more and to learn from each other. Father God, we ask that you guide, lead, and teach us as we communicate together in this Bible study lesson. Father God, give everyone a heart to participate verbally so that it will not be the same old folk, Father God. So we honor you, we praise you, we glorify your name, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, thank you. Alright. I see some folks are just getting online. Pastor, how you doing?
Uh, doing well, doing well. Busy day, doing well.
We just, we just finished prayer.
Amen.
Okay. We need to go open for you.
Okay. So I hope everybody's had a great day and everything. We will chat here for just a minute, let some people get on here. It's about seven after, let's make sure people get logged in. Thank you Vince for opening up. It's good to see everybody who is on here and it's it's good that it's another Wednesday.
Yes.
Yes.
Amen.
Indeed. Been busy hectic times, a lot of things going on folks, lots going on and it's a good time to, to be talking about the word, to be discussing the word. Just as people are joining, I just want to welcome everybody that have been with us and those who have, you know, I don't know, may be just checking in tonight, maybe peeping in on us, maybe on YouTube. We just want to say thank you for stopping in, thank you for those faithful who continue to be on here. Please continue to invite others to, to do, to do Bible study in some way. There's some things that I've learned, I think over time, that there are some rituals, some habits that we do that can be very beneficial and I think one habit is coming together and reasoning together over the word. And when I started going to Bible study a long time ago, that it changed my life and it was the beginning of a big time change in my life. When I found myself in a church on a Wednesday night, I knew that there was something changing, going to change in me, you know. There, as everybody on this call, you know how life different ways and seven o'clock on Wednesday night, a lot of times that's date night. There's restaurants used to back in the day, restaurants had, that's one of their biggest nights on Wednesday night. You know, it's a hump day, everybody kind of goes to the bars and throw one back and stuff like that. You know, and I deserve it because I made it this far, those kind of. So I, I, you know, there, you know, maybe people starting having the ball games. Used to they wouldn't have ball games on Wednesdays or Sundays, but they have many times. So there's a lot of competition about where you could be anytime in your life. But I think in, in the recent events that's happening, I think you would agree with me that being around people who are talking about this word and falling in love with this word and letting the word show on them is a very good place to be. And so we welcome all of you. If you have the chance to text two or three people, this is, can be a part of your ministry this week. Is that while I'm talking right here, is this to be, this is a great time to pull your phone out and share the link, share, tell them to come on Facebook or send them the, the the Zoom contact so that we can see them too and they can talk. You know people in your life that like to talk about the Bible, might want to talk about the Bible, they might want to talk about anything. This would be a good time for them to come and their, their church may not be having this or you may have some people that you've been trying to figure out how to invite to Christ and you don't want to do it one-on-one. This is a good time right now to text them and say, hey, look, why don't you just check, check this out. We're talking about Romans and it's pretty interesting. Now, don't write it if it's not true. If you're just doing it and checking in and coming in and you turn it on and then you go watch the ball game or go cook, then don't, don't invite them. Because, you know, that's not going to be sincere. But if you invite some folks and you're going to be engaged and, and hope that they get engaged, engaged, that this would be a great time while I'm chatting to, to make that phone call or put yourself on mute, make a phone call or plug in and that kind of thing. So so do that, okay? We'll give you a couple of minutes, a couple more minutes to do that. See if you could contact at least two people. And while you're doing that, I will start pulling out here. Now last week, we were trying to summarize Romans, the fifteenth, fifteenth chapter of Romans. And we were talking about Paul and, and what he was doing and, and that's pretty significant and what we try to do is try to bridge. So we'll go back just a little bit so that we'll have some continuity as to what's happening. Paul, of course, is greatest missionary, arguably the greatest missionary ever. Wrote two thirds or two thirds of the New Testament, of course, is attributed to him. He would go to these cities when he didn't get a chance to go to these cities, he would write, he mentored, man, he mentored everybody. You know, mentor the mentors. He was directly challenged by Christ to stop doing what he was doing and, and to turn his life around, and which he did, changed his whole name. And then began this ministry about establishing the church. There weren't, you know, before Paul, wasn't anything that was called church. The people actually met and, you know, you know, in his culture, it was Hebrew culture and the reason why we are called Judeo-Christian, we, you know, we, our origins come from, you know, Judea and from the Jewish sect of people who introduced to mankind this monolithic God. Before then, you had folks who had all these other different gods. And, 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 and our history is about Theos or, or the one, one God, one God creature, one creator, rather than Thor and all these other people. You know, you hear thunder, you saw that's a thunder god. See somebody in love, that's, you know, Nefertiti and, you know, you know, all that. So you had all these. But then this consolidated, this, this is a whole different concept of, you know, God, one God. And then a nation that was called with a unique relationship with that one God. And through their generations were, were actually chosen and called them the chosen people to tell, and to hold down the concepts and to perpetuate the concepts throughout humanity. And then came the promise of Jesus Christ to restore, to restore that original relationship that we had at creation. Alright, and that was because there was a lot of disruption, that big disruption is called sin. And we've been asked by our Creator to be faithful and to, to not be, you know, sinful, that we put Him in the center of our lives. Paul is developing or is a co-developer of this movement that would spread from, you know, the center of Jerusalem and Israel. And it would move from the epicenter, which is the kind of where everything is beginning. And it's to move out like ripples in a pond. Have you seen anybody throw a rock in the pond and not skip, but when you just drop it in there and you see the ripples go out. And that's what was happening here. You had just a few people in one place that saw this miracle, this wonderful manifestation of God himself deciding, oh wow, this thing that I, I had in my devotion this morning. That the, that, that, oh, and this was so beautiful, y'all. And, and you know, if I get all mushy about it, just let me be mushy. If y'all don't think it's mushy, then don't worry about it. I, I love this. So in my devotion, this description came through of God, that the difference between all these other people who were dealing with God was that they always had to, to reach for their God. They had to go seek Him and run and go get Him and those kinds of things. And our God, the God, the only God, loved us so much, He reached and came to us. You know, you don't hear Thor or any of those gods that you see on television and that kind of stuff that we've seen in, in Greek mythology actually reaching to us. But here is God. I mean, you see some some copper cat kind of stuff that says, you know, that, you know, God is mating, mating with the human and those kinds of things. But you had the Holy Spirit come and to, and, and that manifests itself in Jesus Christ. And God walked with us to, to teach us and then to take upon all of our sins, take upon Him all of our sins and to die on our behalf. And, and to promise that He is going to watch over us and equip us and to promise us that we haven't seen anything yet. To promise us that He is building a place for us right now. To promise us that we will not only have life, but have it more abundant. To promise us that not only will we have it more abundant, that we're going to have it forever, that we shall never taste death. That's pretty strong.
Amen.
That's real strong.
Amen.
And as, as the guy who, who walked in, you know, in, in the situation where there might have been some trouble and that, but this big guy comes up in the middle of the crowd and he's standing head and shoulders over the crowd and everybody was kind of being fearful of that. This little guy looks up at that guy and looks at everybody saying, I'm with him. You don't have to be big, you just have to be with him. Alright, so when I look at Christ and what He's done and His power and stuff, I, I don't have to be that big, I don't have to be great and stuff like that. I'm just letting you know I'm with him. I, I came in with him. So that's the background of this is the gospel is that Paul is saying is setting up a means by which the, the gospel will be spread. And so he's writing this letter to, to the Romans, which is going to be another epicenter of building big time church outreach. He is setting the stage for that. God is setting the stage and Paul is one of his equipment expert who is equipping the saints and that's what we need to be equipment experts. We need to learn to equip one another, equip ourselves, and that's what we're doing tonight. That's what Bible study is, is the Bible says equip, equipping the saints. What does that mean, equipping things? What does that mean before we go forward? Well, what does equipping somebody?
Giving you something to work with.
Alright, that's a good, good one. Who else?
Given them what is needed to do the job.
Right, right. What, and what, what, what job is that? And what job is our job, the church job?
Making disciples.
Making disciples. I'm so glad you didn't say making men. That would be the club. And, and so Paul is laying down some foundation of what, first of all, what, you know, what we look like, who we are and, and what does discipleship and that kind of stuff look like? What is it going to take? We talked about the renewing of our mind. We, we talked about knowing our pedigree, like there were some who were born in this, there were some who were adopted and grafted in. So we need to know where we came from to know our history of it. Just in case somebody say you don't have anything, you're not anybody, you haven't been here long enough. Well, you can open up Romans and, and tell folks, look, you know, you know, folks might look at you and say, well, you ain't nobody because you did such and such and such and you haven't been in the church long as I have. Go to Romans and you can just knock all that out. You can go to Romans and no, you don't have to go far to find out like, look, no, I, I don't have to jump through your hoops. No, you need to do this and this and that. No, no, sir. I really don't have to do that. And, and, and you know, folks may think that because they've done this and they've been in church for sixty years and in church for sixty minutes, then they and then, you know, Paul might write down so that they can keep this as, put it up in a little piece of paper and before they get all saintly, you, they'll have to read that piece of pa, paper saying, you know, we've all come short of the glory of God.
Amen.
Yeah. Or somebody can say, no, you're not worth anything, you, you sorry so and so. And you could say, you know, while I was yet a sinner, which I was, you know, I know that. And I was his enemy. He still loved me and he forgave me of my sins. And he, he not only, you know, forgave me of my sins, he grafted me into his family. So be very cautious that when you talk about me, you talk about Christ.
Amen.
Okay, because I'm a part of the vine. If you talk about the vine, you talking about the vine. Right? So, so, so Paul gives us all of this history, this rich history of, you know, not only history, but also he gives us construction pieces as to, you know, how, and how we should construct, you know, construct and conduct ourselves. And we've, we've learned a whole lot in the last couple of weeks and three weeks or four weeks or whatever about how the church needs to treat people. Right?
Amen.
Big time on it. We, we need to stop condemning folks. We need to stop condemning ourselves.
Yeah.
We need to understand what our grace and what our mercy and our rights are. We need to understand, we need to understand what kind of tree we have here. I mean, you know, and, and, and who we are. We need to also understand what kind of tree we're not.
That's right.
Amen.
Right?
Yes.
You know, he didn't too much life for trees hanging around with no fruit. And so all of this is coming up and so when we're coming to the end of this, this, this book, I want to make sure we get all of it. So, you know, don't put this too far away. Please don't put Romans too far away. Somebody said last week that we need to do Romans. I don't know how often they say it. As we need to, I know my wife talks about, we need to do Romans, oh, you know, once a quarter, once a year, some.
Yes.
Right, okay. So in my studying and, and preparing, I've learned a whole lot more about this gift that we have. And the gifts that we have, not only the gift that we share, but the gifts that we have. And individual gifts and how it is important to collect all these gifts together so that the, the church remains dynamic. And it tells me about the diversity, right? The diversity, you know, when we went back and we, we had, we looked up the gifts and when you start branching from Romans, like all the gifts that we found in there, and then we had to do the collaborative research like in Corinthians and find out those gifts, right? We go to Ephesians and find some other things that we have at our power. You can move all the way through the Bible from the New Testament from Romans to start talking about, right? Some of the things and, and the gifts that we have and the powers that we have.
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
And so that's, that's a part of equipping the saints so that in perilous times like this, that we don't play victim. That we don't play victim, that we don't say, I don't know what the world's coming to when we've already been told.
That's right.
We, we know what the world's coming to. Anybody know what the world's coming to? Come on, I'm gonna put you, what, what is this world coming to? An end. There will be an end for this world and there will be a new
A new heaven and a new earth.
New heaven and a new earth. We've been promised that.
That's right.
Yes, and anything that gets ready to come to the end, including us, going to get raggedy at the end.
You're right.
Alright, just checking. Just check. Okay, so, you know, we're, we're gonna, things are going to deteriorate at the end. We've seen that in Revelation. And so we, we shouldn't be dismayed or shocked or surprised, but what we need to be is equipped. And we need to be that, that church on the hill, whether that's in one of us and that's our ten of us. Whether that's in one of us and that's, or ten of us, or three of us, or twenty of us, or twenty thousand of us. While the world is doing all of this gyration, then there ought to be some people standing pretty peculiar in this, that, that, I think that even in this chaos. Um, I was telling somebody earlier today. I believe that, that, that this, even this disruption and chaos, the stuff of last Wednesday, all that is that anytime that has happened in the history, and you go through the Bible, there has always been representative of God who stood in the gap.
Amen.
It actually had people coming to try to find people of God. Come on, anybody, come on, somebody read some of this. You know, how, how did David get discovered? For just for one example, how did David get his discovery? How do you get his start? What was? Political uprising. Political uprising. Right? Paul was in charge. And these uncircumcised folk acting up, calling names. Ain't nothing new under the sun. Threatening the top of the government. Come on. Saying, send out your best. And, and people were, because they looked a certain way, or, you know, or thought that they were some kind of, they had them scared. Right, am I right?
You're right.
They were oppressed, scared to fight the power. And the king even was offering like, man, if somebody will take care of this unrest, I will make a deal with you. And if it had not been for that unrest, we would not be talking about David right now. And something is gonna come out of this, something is gonna emerge. Every era who has had, who has had this unrest and stuff, God has prepared somebody for a time like this.
Amen.
We have been here before. Okay, alright? And so we need to know, as a church, we need to know what our role is as a church. Sometimes the church is trying to take on a different role, trying to, you know, um, there's a role for everybody in this, and it should not get mixed up. Um, there's a financial role for some folk, there's a political role for somebody, there's a social role for somebody. But then, you know, the major role that the church is gonna be is what kind of role? What kind of role? It, it, it given Romans?
Judging.
It is a what? What kind of role?
Judging.
Say that again, judging? What, what, what kind of role that we play today? What kind of role we're supposed to play today? What, what kind of services are we supposed to be supplying when the world, even, and and even today? What should somebody be able to come to the church for? Come on, somebody, we gotta know, if somebody comes to our store, what do we have on our shelves?
Groceries.
What kind of groceries do we have in the church?
Christlike, way we should, Christlike, the way we should act, way we should teach.
Umbleness.
Okay. We, we should be showing character.
Yep, through the spirit, yeah.
Right, we, we should be showing character. If everybody else is lying, there should be some truth. If everybody else is stealing, there should be some honesty. If everybody else is not taking responsibility, we should be saying we're totally a hundred percent accountable. If everybody else is, uh, is using racism, we should be, um, teaching and loving and, and, and bringing brother to love. If everybody is, you know, you know, discriminating against, you know, different people, we should be embracing everybody.
Amen.
So whatever the world is doing, we ought to be doing, we need to differentiate ourselves and not be confused. Do not be blank.
Conformed to the
Yep.
To this world.
That's right.
But be
Transformed by the new thing of our mind.
We should be a transforming entity.
And don't be accepted to Satan devices.
A- 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 absolute. Now, you know, Congress is doing their thing today, but we have a thing to do. That, that's not our thing. That, that's not our thing. You know, wherever you stand on that, whether what they're doing today, that's not our thing. Uh, you know, w- w- we're supposed to be citizens, we can vote, we can be congresspeople, and we can be presidents, we can do that. But that's not our thing. That's not our main thing. Our main thing, right? Is to represent what's right when God says is right.
Amen.
Okay?
Amen.
And, and Paul is establishing, is helping to establish this entity that will come throughout time with this main thing saying, wherever you are, whether you in communist of China, whether you are in, uh, the, the, you know, the throes of of tribal warfare, warfare in a, you know, the third world situation, whether or not you in China or Hong Kong having that conflict, whether you in NATO, wherever you stand. The thing, wherever you stand, you stand for Christ.
That's right.
And that means you can be a Republican and say, but I, but I stand first for Christ. I don't stay, when you start standing for Christ, I'm done. You, you know, you can, you know, you're Democrat, you said, boom, boom, you could be black, white, you could be male or female. And say, but for the first thing that I stand for is Christ.
Amen.
That's the first thing. Now, I can agree with you on some things, but the only thing I can do all agreement with you is Christ crucified, dead and buried, and came for my sin, sins. And gonna come back again. I can agree on all of that.
That's the truth.
O- okay, and so that's where we're fundamentally just to, to stay in that same place. So I can't go with you anywhere else. I can't go with you anywhere else now. I could hang out with you a little bit and do that, but I can't go anywhere outside of that. Are y'all here?
Amen.
Y'all got me now? I don't need to be in Christians now, when you, you over there. And you kind of, you know, change over there, you come over there, you change. So, Paul is, is setting up this. See, that now, the thing what, now, now let me ask you this, right? Did, did, did Paul set up a, like a, a building or a university? Was he, was he establishing a university or, you know, like a college?
I don't think so. He was, wherever he went, he was teaching.
For the churches.
Right, the churches. What, what were the church? Oh, good, I'm glad you said churches. What were the churches? What did they, what did the churches, uh, look like?
It could be someone's home.
Yeah.
A lot of times, most of the time, they were homes.
Right.
Early, so, you know, some of them met in the, the synagogues. They did even, you know, but that was kind of perilous too, cuz um, even in this last text, he said, you know, pray that I'm delivered. Because there's some people who don't believe, they still didn't believe in Jesus Christ, they were Jews and didn't believe. And so, as he was raising money and moving from place to place, he said, look, pray that I be delivered from nonbelievers. Because he carrying all this money, plus they, if you mess around, first of all, it's one thing that you carry money. Alright? In that day. The other thing, if you're carrying money and you believe something that I hate, alright, you, you double trouble. I have two reasons to keep. Okay? Okay, so I wanted to put the picture out there. You know, some people like, well, you know, he's a missionary, he got on white going from town to town, uh-uh, he's carrying cash. Alright, he loaded, and he on the other side. Now they, now, now, they killed Jesus for how many pieces of silver?
Thirty.
Okay, so I ain't no telling how much gold Paul was told. You hear what I'm saying? I want you to get the concept. One of Jesus' own boys sold him down the river. For just a few pieces of silver. All carrying the mother lode from church to jail. And he's on this other side, talking about this man they killed. Get the picture. And you got all of these powerful synagogue, Sanhedrin, Pharisee folks that trying to oppress, still keep this can, this lid on this concept. Then you've got a whole government that really doesn't want anything to do with this concept either. Okay, you got all that. You got it?
Right.
And this is what, this is the atmosphere where Paul is in. Now, I'm saying all that to say, if he did all that, you know, we ought to be able to get a few more people to go to Bible study on a Wednesday night. I ain't talking about y'all. I'm talking about the folks who, you know, that we need to talk to. That this guy put his, his whole life at stake to tell us about everlasting life. In a time where people would just cut you down, take all your mess, and, and you wouldn't even be prosecuted. And here we are, I mean, all we gotta do is plug in a device and turn on the phone, invent some, make sure you hooked up and everything. And, um, you know, sometimes we have to twist people on just to tell them about everlasting life.
That's, that's not part of the lesson though. The Bible just re, you know, reminds us that this is nothing new under the sun. You know, even when he walked and talked, he was there talking in person. And, you know, he had the history, so you could see him. He knew him, he knew the places, not only did he know the people, he knew the, the, um, the structure of the government, he knew the policies and the thoughts of the government, of the ones who were oppressed and the those ones who were being oppressed. He had intimate relationship with those, knowledge wise and relationship.
Yeah.
And he still couldn't reach, I mean, you know, some people just weren't reachable.
Well, he was leaving some work for us to do too, you know?
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
He ain't had time to get everybody.
Yeah.
He would did everything, wouldn't even know us.
That's true.
Come on now, you trying to get me out of my preaching job? Hey, let me tell you that, remember what a great philosopher was, philosopher was told us in Sunday School one morning? Said, you know why God created, created time? So everything won't happen at one time.
That's right.
Great Kurt Moss.
Yeah.
Greatest guitar player this side of Mississippi. God created time so everything won't happen at one time. So there's a time for us.
Yeah.
Another great philosopher would say, to everything, there's a season. Alright, so I digress. So let's bridge. Now Paul is setting up, he's talking to these folks, he's writing to these people. He may be fresh out of prison, trying to get in between all this, he's got to show his visa to get anywhere. Said he's on the way to Spain, you know, he's trying, he's planning his trip. This is where I need to be. I need to get this word done, I need to get this work done, I need to, uh, get this money distributed. So we're moving some, uh, we ta- talked last week about how important this work was and how different this was, that Paul is moving money from the rich churches uh, to the not so rich churches. Right?
Right.
Now, sometimes we see that sometimes the big churches are coming in and sucking out the money out of the little churches. Come on now. Build, build a big church and then suck the little churches, and then everybody come to the little church wanting the big church experience.
Right.
Alright, so, so you see there's a reverse kind of deal going. But they, they had church wherever five people got together. They were gonna have some church. And they were supporting that and taking like wherever, you know, maybe somebody's really, really established over there and you, you messed around and converted a king or converted somebody, he's got all this money, so he's sending it down there. So, oh man, y'all are running from, you know, tents and stuff, let, let's get y'all a little money so that y'all can get this word out. And then he would go to another place like that, right? And help the other folks.
Right.
Okay?
Amen.
And, and so, let's read Romans fifteen, um, twenty-nine through thirty-three, and then we'll, we'll go to, um, to sixteen before, uh, and, 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 and see what he's saying. He kind of sums up this chapter, so I wanna make sure, uh, um, that we grab that piece. That's really powerful stuff that he's saying, that to the fledging, the fledgling churches that are developing. What is he saying?
I come to you, I will come in the full measure of the blessing of Christ. I urge you brothers and sisters by our Lord Jesus Christ and by the love of the Spirit to join me in my struggle by praying to God for me. I hope that I may be kept safe from the unbelievers and and that the contribution I take to Jerusalem may be favorably received by the Lord's people there. So that I may come to you with joy by God's will and in your company be refreshed. The God of peace be with you all, amen.
Okay, so what, in short, what is he saying? What is he saying? Right, kind of summarize what he's saying to.
Given the plan of what's gonna be coming up and that, uh, he's asking for their, uh, prayer while he's on the journey.
Right. And he's asking for what to happen, what, what? Specifically, he's asking what is one of the concerns?
You kept safely from unbelievers.
To keep him what now?
Safe from un- unbelievers.
Oh, what, what you think the unbeliever is gonna pose as a problem?
Can you say that question again?
What? Why do you feel like, um, he, why do you feel, why do you think he is, um, feeling threatened? Particularly by the unbeliever?
That is said because his faith, they were gonna rob him.
Yeah, and, and, and.
He's also a threat to them too.
Yes, yes.
His messages.
Okay, what's, what's the threat?
That, the, the things they do for making money will be jeopardized if the message goes through. The sinning, the gambling, the, the, um, all those things they were doing blaspheming. Those who speaking. Blasphemy, those who speaking incorrect word and getting money over that. Um, you know, playing church to get paid, wow, he was talking to a lot of church people.
So, so y'all remember when the church was on the forefront of um, the church of, or the church now? Was on the front lines of, you couldn't sell alcohol? Y'all remember that? You remember the church was on the frontline? Um, about blue laws and saying, look, you know, you can't open, but such, such, you can't open a full church on Sunday? Well, you know, roses couldn't open till one o'clock. Y'all, anybody remember that?
That's right, yeah.
I remember at one time you couldn't open at all on Sunday because of blue laws in Maryland.
Okay, in the church, the church used to talk about that. Now, now, the, the uh, beach ball classic, y'all know the beach ball classic? They used to have to kind of alter their schedule because a bunch of the school, schools were Christian schools. And they could not play on Sunday. Anybody remember when they didn't have softball tournaments on Sunday?
That's right.
I remember when didn't have nothing on Sunday.
Okay, alright, alright. Okay.
Yes, stores were closed, yeah.
Well, what, what changed? What changed?
It wasn't profitable.
Oh, there you go. And and what was gonna be the um, the, the kind of, the, the creator of all either evil, the precursor of evil? The love of money?
Love of money, 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 money.
Decision, we went now, you know, okay, so how about COVID? Going, you going, do what now, you, we're deciding between lives and money? Is that the decision?
Well, it's called economy now.
Well, whatever you call it, you know, if you put lipstick on a pig, it's a pig. If you don't believe it, kiss it. If you put lipstick on a pig, a sow, she'll be a sow. You put lipstick on a boho, and he still be a boho.
Well, that's, that's an interesting thing pastor, because even when you look at that um, you, you have people saying, hey, you know, well, I gotta go to work, I gotta do this thing. So, if I get it, I get it, it's my time. So we start to devalue our life for the, the money, the economy and, and all these things. You know, it's, it's, it's clear, but to, and and it's really not, but we say it's justified, because we need to do these things.
I don't say it's justified.
Well, yeah, no, but that's, that's the sense that are saying, you know, people have to go to work so they can keep making money, we can't keep it closed, you know, the government officials are saying that. We can't stay closed because people gotta live.
I'm saying that the just will live by faith. I'm saying that man cannot serve, can't serve two masters, that's what I'm saying. And when you try to serve mammon? It, it ain't working, is it working? Trying to kill, you trying to kill everybody. My, 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 I'm, my brother dead because somebody wanted to get paid. Okay, that's real talk. They, they traded out, there's somebody wanted, want to keep their bar open. They wanted to keep their bar open, so that my brother could die early. They need to keep the choices out there like real truth. People are dying early in the rest home at a disproportionate rate. And the disproportionate amount of people like nurses and are taking stuff back to their house and that kind of deal. Because they can't contain it, why? Because some of the workers are still going to the bar and going. Because they're trying to de-stress at the bar. Now they're going to get COVID and going back to work and killing everybody at work. COVID came in there on somebody. They're going to the prisons and the same deal, prisoners can't get out with COVID getting in. There's somebody still wanting to get in a juke joint on a nightclub. And folks are still selling liquor and now people who are drunk don't know nothing about six feet distance because they don't know. They can't put their hand on their nose. But because of political pressure, you gotta keep, you know, you, you gotta keep the bars open. Are you, you hear what I'm saying? The threat is that if, the threat for non-believers. If believers outnumber the non-believers, they will not get what they want. See, a believer messes up the plans of non-believers. Okay, this is the challenge, why did John the Baptist get his head cut off? Was John, was John the Baptist a believer?
He was a believer, he was preaching against sin.
Uh-oh, do what?
He was a believer and he was preaching against sin.
Why? Because Herod wanted to do what?
Herod want that brother wife.
Yeah, and, and, and he was holding them accountable. All people accountable, they will kill you.
That's right.
Come on now. All people accountable, they will kill you, they want you to shut up, just shut up and go along. Saying that his major deal, just as dangerous as him ca-carrying, li-listen, li-look, y'all, this is what it's telling me, right? He is just as dangerous, is just as dangerous carrying the gospel as it is carrying gold unprotected. Come on somebody, anybody read it, anybody read it? I'm a double threat, I'm carrying money to supply the church. And I'm supplying something that is, that you ain't gonna ever give out of, and that's it, I'm, I'm supplying faith. You sure don't, you don't wanna, you sure don't want me to get this money to the church, but you sure don't want me to get this message there. Because the message is gonna go further than the money. Are y'all seeing these, these, these train tracks, right? That's why Satan, Satan don't want you to tie, don't want you to offer. Because the deal is, is that sometimes the, the money, alright, will slow the message down. So, you know, if you don't get to buy another computer, you got a, a sorry microphone system, or your church about to fall down, it's hard to get the message out. I'm telling you now, they, they, now I ain't talking about nobody, I'm just talking about what I'm talking about, it's hard to listen to a preacher with run over shoes, now I'm here to take. It's hard to have somebody that got run over shoes and stuff and said, God will take care of you uh, from head to toe. It's hard because God will supply all your needs and stuff and I'm begging and borrowing and stealing. Right, but a lot of times, you know, the church will not supply for pastors, will not supply for preachers, and will not supply. This is about supplying churches, you know, and so people would hold back on that. And the Bible talks about it, you know, we go all the way back to where Nehemiah. Uh, we go back to a whole lot of different places, like, look, man, you can't uh, you know, um, have, uh, we gotta supply the church like we supply our homes. If we like nice things, we need to do that, uh, so, so, that's on the, that's on the financial piece. But also folks will wanna choke out the message. And preach about something that one of your deacons is doing, they folk will have a meeting.
That's right, and kick you out.
And have a lynching, y'all think something happened up in Washington, they shine, they, they have one of those in, in Baptist churches and other churches once a week. People, non-believers coming in and throwing out believers. Come on somebody. You don't really have to worry about believers in church having an insurrection. What you have to worry about is when there's some so-called believers. Go call the rest of the so-called um, believers out of the club. And out of the other places to come and vote the unbelie, the believers out.
That's right.
Are y'all hearing me? Okay? So, so Paul was saying, with this double, you know, you gotta look at the whole message, they don't waste any move, any messages here. He's a, 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 a threat to society in so many different ways. He had a direct relationship with Jesus, he was non-compromising in it. He was a person that was setting up churches everywhere, he was duplicating himself. Because he was preparing people that if they take him down, there'll be twenty more that come up in his place. He dangerous. Are y'all seeing what I'm saying? And he's putting his money where his mouth is, he's not just going around mouthing. You're like, look, I'm gonna start a church and I'm bringing the funding. I'll be the pack mule if I need to, he ain't a bishop sitting there saying, hey, look, y'all come on and bring, y'all come on now, go out there and get it. He's not doing it. Y'all go ahead and bring it on in here and let me have, you know, no, he is out there doing it, he's, he's risking his life. And redistributing the situation, are y'all seeing what he's doing? Okay, and so, he is doing the things that we need to actually mimic. That we ought to be suppliers, we ought to be, uh, we ought to, actually, we ought to threaten every unbeliever, we ought to be a walking threat. You ought to be able to walk in meetings and everybody roll their eyes. Like, oh, see, it's a lot of times we trying to be liked. And Paul was like, I'm going here, I'm going there, I know that this is not gonna work, I'm, I'm, I'm fresh out of prison, I'm shipwrecked, I'm doing all kind of stuff, man. They talking about, you know, you know, they're going through all kind of stuff, and so we need to understand that these guys are constantly under duress. But they're still being effective. And the way they're being effective is that they got the right kind of enemies. They are enemy to anybody who is an enemy of Christ. Yeah, if you're enemy of Christ, you're enemy of mine. Simple as that. I don't know if the church is like that anymore. Church ain't drawing lines like that anymore. And they, and they're not really against those folks who are stealing babies and stealing, uh, stealing uh, thoughts and stealing. Who are um, you know, are, are, are stealing the dreams of potential Christians. Ain't nobody mad at, 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 at people who are selling liquor, you know, ain't nobody mad at it. Matter of fact, they got, you know, folk who in the church, you know, selling liquor and number one drug that's hurting anybody, look at the number one drug, that's, oh man, what about these um, heroin? Look at the statistics, look at alcohol. And you know, and just because it's your friend selling it, don't make it right.
Like your mama selling it, don't make it right.
Well, you know, you paying the light bill. My baby paying the light bill with that crack, so let him sell. Folks, it's real.
It's real now.
It's still real, and, and people are being sold out with what we're saying and what we're doing. Because it's culturally accepted. Paul was saying, we need to set the culture. Where we go, we need to set the culture, we need to stop uh, being a thermometer, and we need to be the thermostat. Yeah, some of us need to be able to walk in a cold church. I ain't worried, I ain't never worried about whether we gonna have a good time at somebody's church. I used to. Then I start, look, then I start packing me a go play the Holy Ghost. And if they ain't got none, I just crack open mine.
And let it flow.
And let it go, y'all know. Hey, so, so my choir members will tell you that we've been invited, you know, we've been to some places that we made the number. And we had church, there were places that the GPS couldn't get us all the way there. But we, we knew that we were gonna have some Holy Ghost right there, because we knew we had it with us. And Paul was that kind of deal, he's like, I'm bringing supply and I'm bringing word. I'm not coming to find anything, y'all, thank y'all, and you, and you know Paul would tell you too. Paul would say, you can supply me if you want to, or you don't, you don't have to. Right, he said a base or a bound. Right, y'all give me a pool pit, uh, a sand pit, I will still preach.
Other word, you got a jelly bag.
Okay, there you go. No, no matter what, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, you know, we, we're not as a church, and that, that's why the church has the, you know, a lot of times the church is trying to, you know, be like water, you trying to fit here, fit there and all that, no, no. Give us a water, it needs to be a tidal wave, come and wash and flush everything out. Yeah, there you go, tsunami, that's what I, there you go. Tsunami that causes a tidal wave, be the cause of the tidal wave. And so that's, you know, Paul is, is coming and look, man, we're gonna take this thing by storm, but practically, he's talking practically and he's talking spiritually. Look, we're gonna be equipped, because I'm, we, we're bringing money, we got a system of helping each other. And we're gonna be equipped because we're bringing this message, that's, that, that is, is the key, it can't be watered down. You, you know, it can't be taken away from you, uh, uh, so it's a, you know, he's got the practical and the theological with it, y'all see what I'm saying? Okay, y'all got that? And, and there, so, so there's a balance. Paul is not, you know, always shouting and praying and crying, he's thinking too. Right, he's planning. And strategizing, like you say, he got a plan too. He thought, whoa, you know, you, you know, sometimes, you know, we so emotional and stuff. We can't have a meeting and say, this is what we're gonna do. We be singing, Lord, make a way somehow. Yeah, he will. Okay, it's called tithes and offerings too. He made a way. Tithes and offer to the storehouse. He has made a way. And he say, I am, I am the what? The way, the truth, and what? Okay, he's all them. So, so he has established a way. And all of those things he has told us is that way. And Paul is showing you a part of that way that he's been inspired. A part of that way is being grafted. A part of that way is being transformed. A po- part of that way is utilizing gifts. A part of that way is, uh, iron sharpening iron. A part of that way is given of your own for the collection, so nobody goes hungry. A part of that way is loving your brother like you love yourself. A part of that way. But people are taking the way and being a part of, 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 apart from that, and calling it the way. But that is the way. That's when they put butts in the way. I don't like this, I, I, Christian, but I don't believe, you know, the, the, uh, you know, the, the races should be together. I'm a Christian, but. You know, I, I don't believe in paying tithes. I'm a Christian, but, you know, so we got those butts in the way. Now, but you love the way. When it becomes, Lord, please heal me a counsel. Well, how about he give you the same measure? What if he gives the same measure? But God doesn't give them the same measure. He said, if you do a certain thing, he will give it to you in. Good measure. Press down. Shaking together. And running over. You don't have to give in the same measure. You don't have to give, you can't. Matter of fact, we can't. We can't, we, we can't. But it needs to be reasonable so that God will activate his promises. And I'm not talking about money, uh, money, I'm talking about engagement. You see what Paul is going through here, that, look, I am engaged, man. I'm going from place to place. I have given myself as a living sacrifice. Cuz I told you to do it. I asked you to do it, and I'm doing it, right? Present your bodies.
A living sacrifice.
Oh, there you go. There we go. And here he is saying, I'm sacrificing myself. I'm going doorstep to store, to doorstep and. Asking, you know, it's, China, it's dangerous asking people for money for the church. And they carrying it too. Okay, then going through all these Roman soldiers and going through different, and I'm on my way to Spain, and Spain might not like them. And all, you got all of that, folks. You hear me? Got all of that. And you have no trail waves, you have no limousine, you don't have anybody carrying the pastor's Bible. You ain't got none of that. He just rode. And that's fine, you hear what I'm saying? But some things are taken into extreme when Paul is out here trying, he is starting the church with nothing. I mean. They, they doing it on foot. They doing it by donkey. And folk got three cars and you can't get them to go, no, I ain't talking about people. See, and now somebody had to preach off a donkey, man, there a whole lot of people go to hell. Cuz folks like, I ain't going out there, I ain't. I ain't got my convertible, I ain't preaching. And y'all know I'm being facetious, but I'm telling you that sometimes the conditions have to be right for folks. Paul's conditions were dangerous.
As it was.
They were dangerous even from his own kind.
That's true.
Now, some of us say, look, you know, I'm tired of my, my own people. I'm tired of my own kind, my own family members. Well, Paul was saying, that, you know, if I could get out of Jerusalem, my home. We could get that. You see what I'm saying? Right, yeah, well, you, you know, so we know how that is, okay? All right, now, so, so Paul is, is, is saying, he, he said, look, if I, if I get, if I can only get back to y'all guys. And that's how we should be, man. But, you know, I, I believe, I heard somebody today saying, let me tell you. When we do get back in church. It's gonna be on. If, if, if we can make it past this second or third road of, of, of COVID and. Everybody, you know, they, 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 they get the shot or whatever, and if family can get home one more time. And this could be, uh, you know, maybe not this Easter, but man, next Easter. Lord, there gonna be more white shoes and Easter bonnets than lawla. We're gonna be a dancing good time. Now, next Easter this time, next Easter communion and baptism. Lord, have mercy. Cuz see, sometimes things have to be taken away from you before you can appreciate.
Absolutely.
And these folks were in the midst of controversy, okay? So, so Paul said, look, when we get together though, fellas, it's gonna be joy. When, when, when we start talking about, you know, I was over in, in Macedonia, I was over here, you know, and. I was over in Corinth, and man, those folks over there doing this, and, and you, then we come together. And, 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 uh, passed over there saying, well, you know, she said, I was over there and I was praying with these people over here. And fifteen people got saved, and they got back. And after a while, you know, uh, you know, preacher JB said, well, you know, I was at the golf course the other day. And the guy came back and I thought he was coming back to, you know, to say something about a golf club, but he said there was something about you. You know, and, and, and it transformed, and, 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 and his whole golf group got saved that day and went back to Pennsylvania and started a church. You know, when we start, start, start talking that stuff.
That's right.
And we get back together and stuff, you know, my way with grandson and stuff, he, well, you know, uh, you know, a lot of times. People who are in the church, their children and children's children rebel from the church cuz they seen enough. They, they seen enough of some of that stuff. You know what I'm saying? They got to see the back room of the church. Okay, I'll let, I'll let that go, since y'all don't know what the back of the church is. Cuz church, cuz children can tell truth. Sometimes children have seen the back room of the church. Okay, y'all know the Wizard of Oz and stuff that ain't real, but he's sitting there throwing, uh, oh, no, anyway. And, and Toto come and pull the curtain back. And, and ain't nothing in there but smoke and mirrors. Right, and Dorothy already had the power in herself already. I preached that one time. But, but, well, okay, so, all right, so, 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 um. You know, when, when, when we see some of this manifestation that Paul is looking forward to. That the church is gonna be established with strong roots, and that it's gonna be fully financed, and it's gonna be in Spain. Wow, nobody thought a church was gonna be in Spain. Wow, down in the Middle East, you know, people thought. In India, in the middle of Hinduism and all of that, and, and, and folks were, who had Buddha and all that stuff, that there gonna be churches everywhere? He saw that folks gonna be on Zoom one day talking about Christ. He saw. He saw that this was the possibility. Now, and we ought to be able to speak and see that there's gonna be a possibility that things are gonna be financed, and those things are gonna be manifesting that. We're gonna, that people are gonna find it all over the place. And so we start giving high fives. Y'all, y'all know what a high five is, right? Y'all know what dap is, you know, I'm gonna dap, you know, give a high five, what? Right, we, we saying, somebody say, good shot, you know, on, on the golf course, we'll give somebody a high five, right? And, and the, so the Bible, um, tells us to, you know, not to exalt each other, but to exhort. Right, I'm not to be holding you all up and, you know, because we, we, we exalt one person, really. Right, and, and so, but I need to exhort, I need to tell you about yourself, you know. I, I, I fuss sometimes, but I'm so glad we got people who come on Bible study. Cuz, but, cuz y'all keep me from them coming to pick me up from me sitting here just talking to myself to this computer. They can't say that there's some people on the other end of what that dude hollering at them. They can't say. He ain't just talking to the TV. All right, so, so that's a good thing. Uh, um, but, and, and so, I appreciate y'all. You know, listening to me trying to say this thing about, you know, I know I'm odd, I know I teach in a different way. I know I didn't go to seminary. What I try to do is explain this thing to a way that you can take it home and hopefully save your children. And save your children's children. That's how I do it. And so, I know that. Uh, I know I can't do this scripture reference from the front and back and stuff, and I try to give you some that I study. But I'm just saying, I love you so much, that I really want you to fall in love with this word. And, and, and I, so I appreciate all y'all who come on here from time, you know, come on here, uh, Wednesday after Wednesday. To come listen to this old bearded man from Whiteville, from, you know, to come and talk about, uh, Romans in a weird way. So, I appreciate you, I, you know, and, and, and Paul would say. That, that, look, I know I'm hardy all, I told y'all not to have this in the church, I told y'all to put this in the church and stuff. And then he goes to chapter, uh, sixteen. Now, before we leave, y'all read, let's read chapter sixteen, somebody do sixteen. Uh, let's do, and, and we might not get through all of it, but read. And we, and we'll probably do it in, next week too. But just read, uh. One through seventeen, if you would. Sixteen, one through. One through sixteen, cuz if we go to seventeen, that's deep. I got, I got wait six. We'll pick up on seventeen later. That's a whole nother discussion. He starts bringing it back in again. Anybody got it? Romans sixteen, one through, let's stop at sixteen, cuz if we go to seventeen, that's. Getting back into some really meaty, meaty. But this is important. And, and don't, don't be intimidated by the names, all right?
I commend to you, our sister Phoebe, a servant of the church, and. And sentria. You to receive her in the Lord, and a way worthy of the saint. And to give her any help she may need from you. For she has been a great help to many people. Greet Priscilla and Aquila, my fellow workers in Christ Jesus. They risked their lives for me. Not only but, all the churches of the Gentiles are grateful to them. Greet also churches that meet at their hu- house. Greet my dear friend, Ephesus, who was the first convert to Christ in the province of Asia. Greet Mary, who worked very hard for you. Greet Anthrosus, and Junus, my, we left, raised my, my relatives. Who have been in prison with me. They are outstanding amongst the apostles, as they were in Christ before I was. Greet Ephesus, Ephilus, who I love in the Lord. Greet Urbis, Urbinus, our fellow workers in Christ, and my dear friend, Station. Greet Appellus, tested, and approved in Christ. Greet those who belong in the household of Aristibus. Greet Hurridan, my relatives. Greet those in the household of our sisters, who are in the Lord. Greet Traphin, and Traphosa, those women who work hard in the Lord. Greet my dear Persis, another woman who has worked very hard in the Lord. Greet Rufus, chosen in the Lord, and his mother, who has been a brother to me. Greet As, what's that, Asysacris. Philagon, Hermes, Patruthus, Hermes, and the brothers with them. Greet Philistus, Julia, Larissas, and her sister, Anolypus, and all the saints with them. Greet one another, holy kiss. All the churches of Christ send greetings.
Bravo, elder.
Go ahead, isn't that beautiful? Isn't that beautiful? And so what is that, what is Paul saying right there? What, what is he saying? What, what did y'all get from, I hope that y'all get what he's. I hope y'all get the picture he paint, please. What is he saying? What, what, what picture is he painting? Think about the picture, y'all. What is he painting? He's painting a picture. What, what is that?
A picture of these, pe- these people, he's asking you to greet, um, that they're, they're working the Lord.
What, what, what the picture look like?
Yeah, he's honoring them for their service and love and the work they're doing in Christ.
Y'all, y'all think a little hard.
There's no special person, he wants to greet everybody.
Look at the diversity. Look at the women that he's calling out when people don't want women working in front of church. These folks have different backgrounds. They have different kinds of names that says they coming from different places. He didn't name one or two. Everybody, he tried to call out as many people, and talked about, said, one of them act like a mom to me. One is a brother to me.
That, that's a person that, that act like the mom, that's a person that show, show love to everybody. That she meets as a mom, that like is their cheer.
All right, so I want you to get your, get me mind off the individual. What is he saying about the church?
That the church. That they should greet. Each other.
Should greet each other? What is it saying, uh, uh, about the church? Characteristics of the church he's showing right there?
Is that each, each body, each part, each person out of body of the church is working, and, I mean, is working on a different level. But different way, but they working together as one.
Yes, yes, now you on the mother vein right there.
Mm-hmm, and so that, that, that's all them coming together, but they honor each other. And, and, and they recognize each other, and giving knowledge to each other because they're all working together in one body, as one. But they all working on diff- those come together as one body in Christ.
And, and what, what do they have in there? They got helpers. What, what, what else do they have? They invited me in your home, you got well beloved, and you got hopeful, the fruit troops, and you guys, right?
We got YouTube entries here that says, greeting the saints that are working in the Lord, male and female. Churches helping each other. Then also, we are one, everyone has a part.
Yeah.
And everybody's critical.
Yeah. But also, did you notice, everybody has, he, he was saying it cuz they have the same heart and mind working the ministry. Can that gospel?
And you, and you got folks approved in Christ.
Yeah.
Come on, somebody.
Amen.
Right? But you got people appro- approved in Christ. You got folks who labor in the Lord. And you got people who labored much in the Lord.
Yes, they, they talking about the Lord night and day, and they, they pray with the Lord night and day, they turn the Lord, and it is like um I say, like say, your mind and your heart get transformed. And for in the word of the Lord, and you, when you transfer yourself, and then you begin to, it begin to grow within you. So you begin to walk, talking, living, and be, be alive in you.
And and then, what'll happen is then you'll see some other stuff that'll happen. Look, look in there what it says. Call out, look at what he's saying. That, that'll create some helpers. Also, it'll say that, look, I'm saluting y'all because I'm saluting you and your brothers, and you mess around and brought some brethren with you. I'm saluting you cuz you're a brother bringer. So we gotta look at ourselves. How many brothers have you brought with you?
A lot only.
Huh? Right, how many, how many bro- uh, he, he saying, you know, I appreciate y'all who show up, but I'm appreciating y'all who bring people that show up.
Right.
You see what I'm saying? Cuz Paul is understanding, if you're gonna build this thing, it's gonna take all of these, these type people. And and when they do it, and and when we do it, we need to pat each other on the back. We need to create, and and we need to greet each other with what?
Say the holy kiss.
Now, I have seen a lot of church in my life. And I've seen just a few holy kisses. I've seen, I've seen I've seen, I've seen some holy cussers out, but I've seen not enough holy kisses. What is a holy kiss? Really, you know, I know we can say literally what a holy kiss is, but what, 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 what would you think is a holy kiss here? You know, what could be a holy kiss?
So what could be a holy kiss?
Yes.
A holy kiss could be that you got nothing in your heart but love for people. And it don't matter what they went through or what their situation is, you still gonna treat them just like God wants you to, and you still gonna love them anyway, and you not gonna be putting them down all the time. You gonna always be there for me, you gonna always lift them up. And spiritually, say that, say, oh, Sharpe, oh, you gonna always be there to lift their feet up when they're down, you still gonna help them be up, not down. But you gonna show, and they, they love, the love that you have for them, they will know because they gonna feel it when they get around you. Because they ain't gonna be no negative, negative thoughts about it, because it gonna, it gonna grow, it gonna grow that they gonna feel connected, you know what I'm saying? But I have been around people and I know they love me. I don't have, I don't have to, oh, wait for anyone to show me. It's the way they, and the way they act, and how they treat me, and how they, the, 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 the shine of their face, the glow of their face. You know, that's, yes, if they the spirit, know the spirit. And if, if you're with God, Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit know the Holy Spirit, so you gonna know those people love you. You gonna feel it, and 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 it ain't nothing that, that they wouldn't do for you, you know what I'm saying? So that's, that's how God want us to be.
And they don't have to, and they don't have to put their lips on you.
No.
Right, there's a whole lot of people who have, have put their lips on me and and say, God loves you, and I so do I, and and kiss me on the cheek.
And didn't do it.
And that whole, that won't hold it.
That was something wrong they want.
There wasn't no holding this in. Just like you was saying, you will be able to know. And 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 Paul is saying that, you know, and and folks were back in the day, they used to kiss each other on the cheek, or they used to wash each other's feet and that kind of stuff, but it needed to be a holy kiss. Now, who can only, what only, what's the only entity in the world that could actually ordain a holy kiss? The Holy Spirit, the Holy of Holy. Come on, ain't nothing else can get it. And so that means you have to have the Holy Spirit to give the Holy Spirit, to be able to, to do the things of the Holy Spirit, right? Right, and so that's the only way you could give a holy kiss, and then if you were actually emanate, emulating and emanating, you know, there's some illumination of holding this in you, in us. In, in me. That's the only way I can give you a holy kiss. That holding is, some form of holding is have to be in me for me to connect with you in that way.
Amen.
Otherwise, all you doing is passing germs and and stuff, and that's why we, where we at now. That's why Paul, Paul wasn't saying, you know, to be passing that kind of kisses, that's what he, no, don't be passing no kind, you ain't got to kiss me. You ain't, you ain't, I mind kisses and stuff, but don't give me no fake kiss. I'd rather for you give me a holy kiss from across the street. Y'all alright? Y'all still with me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, you know, everybody, I like a picking on the cheek like anybody else, but good gracious, give me a holy kiss. Because let me tell you what, now, what they used to do is um, they, they would give you a kiss. Uh, there was, there was a kiss that um, that one man approached one, and the other one said to him, do what you need to do and do it quick.
That's right, yeah.
Cuz I know you get ready, I know you get ready to kiss.
But he know he gonna be changed.
Yeah, I think that's, that's one of the kisses too now. Okay. Paul didn't say, give me one of them kisses.
No.
Right, that wasn't holding, and there a whole lot of those kisses going on. Right, they said that they used to, what did they say, that they uh, Brutus and uh, when they, you wrote a, a red and everything about Caesar? Um, that Brutus hugged him. So they were, or even they hugged him to find out whether or not he had his girdle on, to see when he can, where he could cut him at. Get close enough to see where we can stick the knife. And so, that is not what we doing as Christians, we getting close so we can bless each other. Bless each other with a holy kiss, to talk good about you, to speak good things over you. Um, pray for you, to pray ye one for another, to give to one another, to share burdens, and to also sharing the laughter and and multiply the excitement and divide the sadness amongst ourselves. That's what we're doing.
Amen.
Amen?
Yeah, amen.
Okay, alright, that's enough teaching for tonight and stuff, and 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 if I did any teaching. Uh, I, I appreciate y'all. I hope we've learned some things. Make sure, we're gonna finish up sixteen. Uh, we'll pick up a little bit of that and uh, and then go to seventeen, which he goes right back to kind of tightening up things again. Um, right there, Paul would, you know, he'll give you a pat on the back, but he's gonna sandwich that with some things too. Yeah, so um, any questions, any comments? Alright, so we're making that, that um
On YouTube says good teaching.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And to God be the glory. For God be the glory. Paul was establishing the church, we are establishing the church. We are reestablishing the church. Making sure that the church is gonna be established in such a way when Jesus comes back, he'll find more. That's, that's, that's what our job is. Make sure that his, that he, he's, this is, that we keep his church. We, we're co-collaborators in that creation. That we are going to, uh, hopefully, we'll be that, that church um, of the, the candlesticks um, that he's looking for.
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
Amen.
Any uh, prayer requests? I'm running over time, I'm sorry.
Pastor, I'd like to put a coworker and her family in prayer. I'd like to put all the children of the church in prayer, as well as all of the families around the world, and the government in prayer.
Anybody else? Somebody else?
A young man that uh that died this week. Great for his family. A young man, those three policemen that were killed for that man.
Someone else? Is there something? Call them out.
I like to put I like to put everybody in the press up, I like to put all leaders into the press circle. Also, like, put all the um, ones that died on sickness in the hospital, uh, put also like to put the real families in the press circle, and the gore family that, the police that got killed yesterday.
Yes, yes.
In the press circle, and also like to put um, all the young children, and even the one that's incarceration in jail, put them in the press circle. And um, all, preaching in, in, even the government and stuff, put them all in the press circle.
The president for sure.
Yes.
Amen.
He definitely needs prayer.
I like to put um, our family in the prayer circle. Um, also, the um, teachers of the world who are uh, dealing with adjusted schedules for teaching, um, getting prepared to go back in environment. Those who are working from home, all the challenges that they're facing with that. I like to put that in there also, again, uh, for the world in this COVID situation. That um, a solution to be at hand, so.
Um, I like to put the um, Tarte family um, in, in prayer, um, as well as Miss Judy, boy, um, Dee and Latoya Hemway. Um, all frontline workers, and I was thinking as um, at events, right before he said something, you know, all the school systems and just the whole situation with schools and children, teachers administration, instructors. Um, I like to put um, our family in prayer as well, and our church family.
Reverend Ganus is um, is, you know, is one of our five pillars um, of faith, and folks who are of praying for us, one of our pastors that are, that pray and and and, or in uh, hold um, us accountable, hold me accountable, and us as a church accountable. And he has lost several key uh, people, and that's um, AJ's um, home church. Uh, our musician, and so they've been affected, affected with death here very significantly.
And Ivan's family members.
Ivan's family member, yes, you know, big, my man, Big Ivan, that comes with us, yes. Yes. So that's, that's, that's tough, he core people in, in his church.
On YouTube, we have uh, prayer for Cleveland Bellamy, healthcare workers, church, pastors, Pastor Andy Anderson and Sister Phoebe.
Amen.
Um, I also want to add, um, Pastor Vanessa, um, in her recovery, and also um, Brother AJ and his family, Ashley and Jupa.
And and we wanna add T- Tavon and his family.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Um, got another one from YouTube, uh, pray for all the non-believers.
Amen. Amen. I don't know if we're gonna have um, uh, Bible study before inauguration, but we need to pray for that inauguration day.
Yes.
Matter of fact, it'll be next Wednesday, right?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, we gotta pray all the way through Tuesday.
Pastor, also, um, I don't, I don't think you mentioned it, but Pastor Jeff.
Yes, Pastor Jeff, um, of um, uh, of um, my mind, just uh
Ooh, Christ United.
Christ United. Having a challenge, real challenge, physical challenge. And so, um, we, we need to pray and lift up his, his strength. Who's that, Chris?
Peewee and Brenda.
Peewee and Brenda.
My church family, I know that word of God, marriage for all peace.
Amen.
Pray for the pantry Saturday that all goes well.
Amen.
I also wanna um, keep all churches um, who are trying to hold fast to their Bible study lessons. Um, and who are um trying to continue to have service during this time of separation, cuz we know there's not many who are doing that.
Right. We just hope through creativity and through uh, to um, through dedication and engagement that they continue to, to, to do the work, and I hope that, you know, that we can help in any way, our tech team and stuff like that can help other churches, which we've been called out to, to different places to do that. So pray for us as we go to those places and try to help them get online.
Yes.
So, let us bow. Um, oh heavenly Father, dear Lord, um, we could just call out names all night, cuz everybody knows somebody that needs prayer. I am one standing while I'm here, dear Lord, I'm praying, but I'm also standing in the need of prayer. It is me, it is me, Lord, I'm standing in the need of prayer. Um, I, I need you, Lord. Um, I need you for my family, I need you for my church family, I need you for these, the beloved, who are here on a Wednesday night, who decided to come and gather and be faithful, to have church. To have church, that's what church folks did in the early days, came together and discussed the word, discussed about gospel, gospel, talked about Jesus and in, in, in everything that he tried, he was teaching everybody. And so we've been faithful in that. Um, but dear God, we also, um, you told us to pray, told us to put these things in front of, and we're putting them in before the throne, the throne. Putting them right in uh, in, in our mediator's hands, cuz we're not, might Putting them right in uh, in, in our mediator's hands because we're not, might not be able to say it right. Might not be saying the right things, might be not be standing in the right place, may not be offering um, the, the, the right words up. But dear God, we know that if we put these on the right-hand side of you, your soul, your son sits. We know that a perfect clarion call will be called into your ear. And so dear God, we just thank you, dear Lord, for promised healing. We thank you for promised prosperity, promised protection. We thank you, dear Lord, all the way through your word. And that, because you said that if we would uh, co- um, um, commit ourselves to this word and purpose ourselves um, to be obedient to it, that you would make our way prosperous. That's in your word. And we call that word right back up to you, dear Lord, that um, we've been obedient tonight, dear Lord. We've been obedient over a few things, um, we, that we came and we proclaimed you, dear Lord, proclaim you, Lord of lords. Told each other, dear Lord, and we were sharpening iron, iron was sharpening iron, dear Lord. Um, we, we came together, there were two or more, we know that we came in your name. And dear Lord, we know that you're in the presence, and in that presence, when you come, you don't come empty-handed. Into that, dear Lord, you come with the Holy Ghost, and then that Holy Ghost becomes healing power. It becomes hope beyond even any measure that we can even think or imagine, um, that you can repair families, dear Lord. You can repair heart valves, you can repair um, uh, cities and even nations, dear Lord. We thank you, dear God. Dear Lord, that you can come and you can use us, dear Lord, to be your hands and your feet to do things that you have us to do. So dear Lord, since we're gonna do that, um, since we're gonna be here doing those things, please anoint our lives. Anoint whatever we say, whatever we think and whatever we do, so that we will be greeting people with a holy kiss. That folks will understand that they are truly in the presence of sons and daughters of a living and powerful God. Dear Lord, we need that, we need to uh, uh, um, not wait till Sunday for somebody to feel your presence. Because they, they, they may not make it to Sunday. We may not make it to Sunday. It's this day that somebody needs to see the presence of the Lord. Anytime we come in somebody's presence, whether it's on the job, or at McDonald's or everywhere we stop to get gas, somebody needs to feel the presence of the Lord because we're standing. We ask for that right now. We ask for that awesome responsibility right now, in the name of Jesus.
Yes.
Dear Lord, don't let this word, dear Lord, go void in us. Know that your, your word won't come back void, but please don't let it be void in us.
Yes, Lord.
That it be made manifest in our lives. And dear Lord, you might see the transformation in front of our very eyes. When that does happen, dear God, uh, we won't pat ourselves on the shoulder, but we'll certainly raise up our holy hands and say, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, real witness. Thank you for letting me be involved in all these things, dear Lord. We ask in the name above all other names, in the name of Jesus we pray, in the church. Amen.
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 Hallelujah.
For the rest of your week, God bless everyone.
And God bless you. Good night, everybody.
Take care.
Good night, love y'all all.
Alright. Bless all my elders, bless y'all. Thank y'all so much for your leadership.